Good evening, the council meeting of June 5th will come to order. Welcome. Would ask that all in attendance please turn off or silence your electronic devices, and if you will, please stand to honor God and country. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the life of a faithful servant in our community, Mr. Bill Hammondtree, who served on this council for 22 years, and prior to that, served as chief of the then volunteer fire department. Thank you for this man committed to putting your love into action. Father, we pray comfort for his family and for those who loved him. May we, each and every remaining citizen, honor Mr. Hammondtree's great legacy by determining to serve our community with dignity, civility, and humility. May we be mindful to conduct the business of your city to bring honor to you. We pray this in the name above all names. Amen. And we will now pledge to the flag of our great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our council and city would also like to extend our condolences to the family of Sam Lowheed. Sam donated countless hours and his talents to our city through his business Bike Works. It was very sad to hear the news of a tragic accident on Saturday morning. Sam was killed in a motorcycle accident, so we just ask all of those present with us today, as well as those viewing on TV, please keep the Lowheed and the Hammondtree family in your prayers. Our first order of business today, or this evening, is the 2018 National Garden Week. If members of the Temple Terrace Garden Club would please approach the podium. Good evening, and thank you for being in attendance. This evening's proclamation reads, "Whereas gardeners have a passion for nurturing the beauty and resources of the earth through the planting of seeds, the care of all plants, and the riches of their efforts; and whereas gardeners seek to add beauty, splendor, fragrance, and nutrition to our lives through the growing of herbs, vegetables, foliage, and flowers; and whereas gardeners work to preserve our country's traditional spirit of independence and initiative through innovation and hard work; and whereas gardening furnishes a challenging and productive activity for our citizens, for those just learning, as well as those having years of experience; and whereas gardening promotes a healthy lifestyle that lasts a lifetime, helps reduce stress from other areas of our lives, and teaches that rewards can come from diligent efforts; and whereas gardening enables members of garden clubs across the nation and the world to make a positive difference in the communities where they reside and work. Now therefore, be it resolved that in an effort to acknowledge the importance of gardening and the numerous contribution of gardeners, National Garden Club's Inc. designates the week of June 3rd through the 9th, 2018, as National Garden Week." Our garden club members. I would note, if there are any persons wishing to address council forms, are available in the back of the room and may be turned into the clerk directly to my right. Next will be a presentation by Hillsborough County School District concerning school resource officers. Hillsborough County School District Representatives Jeff Gibson, Attorney for the School District, and John Newman, Chief School Security Officer, will discuss their anticipated programs to bring school resource officers to the Temple Terrace school campuses. Gentlemen.
Council members. We appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak to you tonight about the proposed plan that we have for placing a security officer or an armed asset at the schools within the jurisdiction of Temple Terrace. As most of you know, after the tragedies down in Parkland, the governor's declaration in March produced a very comprehensive senate bill. For those of us who are waiting in anticipation as to what that senate bill is going to mean for us, it came down to one of three options with regard to putting an armed personnel on each and every campus. We have about 147 elementary school sites in Hillsborough County. Those usually are not covered full-time by either a law enforcement officer, a deputy with the sheriff's office, or a school security officer from Hillsborough County Public Schools. With the new senate bill, which is now the public law 2018-3, we are mandated to put one of those folks on each and every one of those sites. And it's not just elementary, it's alternative education, exceptional education, technical and adult education, anything that comes under the definition of a public school. To that end, because this was done in March, we are under a lot of pressure to get all of our folks trained, deployed, and certified by the sheriff's office as a guardian to meet the legal standard that allows them to be on those campuses. To give you an idea of the manpower situation that the school district found itself in, I have 119 armed security personnel that have always worked for the school district. Most of these men and women are retired law enforcement, retired corrections, have already done their 30 years in public service. Some of them are from the military. As a matter of fact, the numbers shake out, the 78% were in criminal justice, and about 30 of those are retired military, and some of those were both. So we were always fortunate at the school district to have those men and women on our campuses. However, under the new program, they had to be guardian certified. The senate bill, with the public law 3, gave us three options, and that was the option that the sheriff's office had decided upon. The other two were to put a full-time law enforcement on every campus, every day of the week, throughout the entire school year. The second would be for a full-time school employee who's certified under Criminal Justice Standard Training Commission for us in the field at CGSDC, and they would be employed by the school district, but we'd have them deployed at our schools. So full-time employees, full-time employers of the school district, sounds like our own police department, and we don't have that. The third option was to use staff or faculty to be assigned to a school campus once they go through the guardian program. Both the superintendent and the sheriff's office, and then, and most of the agencies you've heard about in the news, were very much against putting a faculty person with an arm, you know, sidearm on them in their class. So we decided to look at the staffing side of that. The school district staff included my personnel, the 119, but it still left us woefully short to put armed assets on every campus. So under the senate bill, we have to request a partnership with all of our jurisdictions to help us out until we are able to get my folks hired, trained, guardian certified, and then be able to put them on campus. We have a timetable that the sheriff's office has provided us to do that. It will probably take most of the school year for the entire county, but for Temple Terrace, specifically in Plant City, our other two partners besides the sheriff's office and the city of Tampa, we look to be able to, we're requesting that you partner with us to help us put an armed law enforcement personnel on the campuses that are within the jurisdiction of Temple Terrace until such time we can rebate them off. That rebate looks to be right at the end of August, maybe the beginning of September, depending on how the training goes. So we're required to come here and ask for a partnership on that. That partnership will be presented by Mr. Stevenson, and I've got to tell you, working with Mr. Stevenson and Sheriff Albano, it's been great, we have a wonderful partnership. It's one of those things we enjoy in the county. You know, when you sit down with your law enforcement partners, and we all understand what kind of situation we're dealing with, everyone brings their A-game. And when everyone brings their A-game, it results in very frank conversations, we all know what our challenges are, but we all look to see how we can get the job done. So the partnership will be for us to be able to partner with Temple Terrace, and we'll provide those details to Mr. Stevenson in his office, and then from there, we'll look to deploy our people on the, I believe it's the five campuses within your jurisdiction.
Thank you, Chief Newman. And as Chief Newman shared, council, as details are finalized, Mr. Stevenson will be bringing this back to us for action. Mr. Stevenson, did you have anything to add at this time?
No, ma'am, I was just going to iterate that we would be bringing back an agreement for council to review and execute at a later date.
Can I just add one thing, real quick? The superintendent himself would be standing here, addressing the council, and he's not here, just because our board meeting began at 3:00, and it is continuing, we just confirmed it is continuing. So he wanted me to apologize, but it would be him, he himself here if it weren't for the scheduling issue.
Very good, thank you.
Just, it's not debate, it's just, I'm going to clarify the dates.
Okay.
I know you said that the months, what were the months and years, just so we know? Because I know you said August and September, I, but I didn't hear the year.
Yes, sir, I get it. Yeah, it won't be 2019. So our, we are really anticipating to put your Temple Terrace Police Department back to its normal operational deployment by the end of August 2018, or the very beginning of September. We, the guardian training schedule is provided by HESO, and their final date for that training is August the 31st. Obviously, for some of us to know, it rains really hard this time of year, so you might have a rain day here and there, but we want to get all the law enforcement agencies back to their normal posture. We understand the challenge it is for everybody, but for, for the answer to your question, it'll be August or September of 2018.
Thank you, Chief Newman. Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Counsel, if the minutes of the May 15th city council meeting are acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
We have a motion, is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Minutes stand approved, thank you. Persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda, a three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public. Individual members of the public who are present in the audience may designate in writing a representative to speak on their behalf, not extending beyond a 10-minute time period. As speakers come to the podium, please identify yourself and your city of residence. During public items not on the agenda, the city manager and directors in attendance do make note of these items. During the city manager's report later in the agenda, Mr. Stevenson may make a comment on the items that you bring up, or where further research is necessary, he or staff that he assigns will bring and reach out to residents directly. We want to ensure our residents that all of your comments are taken seriously and will be followed up with. First up, Mr. Charles Loeb. Loeb. Apology, sir. Mr. Loeb.
My name is Charles Loeb of the 4912 East Line by Avenue, Tampa, Florida, which is right down the street from you folks. And I wanted to come here to make a donation to you all, actually more specifically to the chief's program. The reason I wanted to bring this, because this is really kind of a part of Temple Terrace history, apparently they don't even know about it, the golf course, very much, because it's a part of the golf course's history. There was a program, 1972, called Johnny Bench Invitational. What makes this a little bit tricky about getting something like this is that I went over the golf course, and I was wondering if they knew about it or had spare programs about this, so they didn't really have any or anything like that. You might say, "Well, why not just leave it for them, and you know, happy, you know, have a nice gift," or something like that. Well, the tricky part of it is that it has autographs in it, and some of the autographs are rather valuable. One for sure is Johnny Bench's. It's on the inside cover, it has all kinds of things that are a part of your history here, and on the outs, on the inside cover, on the, on the backside, is Max Bear, who used to be the Beverly Hillbillies, Jethro, and another general's autograph, and inside is Lou Piniella's autograph. And I also threw in myself, when I found this over at a thrift store, Lou Piniella's baseball card from 1972, the year of the program, and it tells about him when he was a boy in his thing in Tampa. So I figured this thing might go pretty good, you know, for it to be auctioned off or something like that for the chief's kids. This program was originally done for the Tampa McDonald Center over USF, and that, anyway, I'm hoping it would be, and was done for the kids at that time, maybe here, here 45 years later, it would be done for the future, some of the kids around here. I was reading over what the price of some of the equipment nowadays for sports, and you all can use every penny for the, that you all can get. I figure maybe the smallest thing I can do with this is to leave it to the chief, being for his kids, anyway, to go ahead and, I'll go ahead and deal with it as he so chooses, but hopefully it'll bring in a fairly substantial amount of money, because I'm really not that interested in it.
Mr. Loeb, if you would stay where you are, and if we could call Chief Albano to the podium, you can make the presentation, and thank you for your very generous support of the Boys and Girls Club, Mr. Loeb.
Thank you for thinking of us.
Thank you.
There is one other thing, too, I would want to mention to you all, when I was coming over here. (LAUGHTER) Hopefully, hopefully, there's a lot of good here in the future as well. There is one other thing I did want to mention real quickly to you all, that when I was coming over across the street, I went over to the bank before I came over here, and I was thinking to myself, you know, maybe you should have a crosswalk over here, talk F-dog about that, and get a pedestrian single, because really, it is a hardship to go between Dollar Avenue and White without having a crossing over here. So something you want to talk F-dog about?
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. Chief, if you'd like to say anything, and then I believe that Ms. Harris would like to capture a picture of you and Mr. Loeb.
Well, I had the privilege of speaking with him before the city council meeting, and certainly, it's very appreciative that he and people like him have continued to step up and to provide support in various ways for the efforts that the city has taken on. It's not, it's just, it's our kids. I, it touches my heart when people say, "It's my kids," and I appreciate that, but truly, it is our kids, and this council has been very supportive of the efforts for Boys and Girls Club, our city manager has, and certainly, the Tampa Bay Area Boys and Girls Club has partnered with us to get us to the point where we are today. And I just, very, very thankful. And I'm sure somebody, somebody will, if nobody else bids on this, I certainly will.
Hopefully, it will, I'm serious about that. Otherwise, I would put it on eBay or something.
Well, God bless you for your gift, we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, may I, may I say something?
Yes, sir.
Just for Mr. Loeb's reference, we've been working on a crosswalk for years. But we're not giving up on it, it's still on the agenda with DOT, so be patient.
Keep hanging in there.
Next, Mr. Sean Lloyd. Mr. Jack Ritter. And do I understand, Mr. Lloyd, you're giving your time to Mr. Ritter? Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, our city manager, city clerk, and attorney. I'm here to give you, and for the record, my view of a troubling situation between the All Volunteer Code Board, Enforcement Board, the code enforcement staff, and the city manager and the city attorney. First, the city attorney hijacked the Code Enforcement Board meeting with an extended sidebar with the director of code enforcement. Conversation could be heard by those in the gallery. The attorney stated that the council approved a matrix used for lean reduction actions, and said that the matrix was a stupid idea. Those are my words. At the same meeting, memory serving me correctly, of course, at my advanced age, that's hard, again, my words, that the fines that the board adjudicated didn't match the crime. That's not a case at all. First of all, they do it by day, they give them 30 days, and if the people don't want to comply, then that's their problem, because the dollars mount up. The large dollar amount is due to inaction by the violator, not the board. Also, the attorney got into it with a verbal dispute with code board members, and it appeared to me that she was a bit hostile. All right? And she talked about the remedy to some of these things, i.e., if they get a building permit to find stops, I don't think that that's the case, and that somebody needs to know that the building permits are issued for six months. So does that obviate what the board has just adjudicated? Me don't think so, doesn't pass the smell test here. All right, let's see, where are we? I've heard that research is being done to do away with the code board, and that consideration's being given to appointing a special master. My question is, where are we going to get the money? Because it's going to cost us something to do. I think an all-volunteer board representing the community is the ideal way. It gets the citizens involved. We need more citizen involvement, not less. And with that in mind, I'd like to hear from you people about the special master, I'd like to hear your voice from the dais for the record as to where you stand on this, and this can be at a later time in the meeting. Last but not least, is the lean reduction case adjudication by the board. These things are, were presented when Andy Ross was the chairman of the board by the chairman of the board to the council. That's the people presenting their side. Understand now that the co-directors to do this, and potentially, that would give the city a second bite at the apple. All issues brought to the Code Enforcement Board regarding lean reduction should be brought at the board level, not a second bite when you go to the council. And this was done previously, and I think you all heard it, and you remanded the case back to the board for further review. I think that the makeup of the board today, it's evolved. I served on the board myself, I was the chairman of the board, and when I left, I vowed that I would keep my finger in the pie, and I'm not sure that everybody agreed that that was a good idea, but I'm one that believes the rules apply to everybody, not a few. All right? As I say, you can take the boy out of the country, but you can't take the military out of the boy. And after 28 years, there I am. The code board has had, or not the code board, but the code apparatus in our city has had about a two-year debacle. After Joe Gross retired, we had somebody that was appointed on an interim basis, who was a philosopher for about six months, and then we had somebody else who later left the employ of the city. Now we've got somebody who's motivated, with more than 10 years of service with the city, is a former police officer, and he's not intimidated by some of these people who want to get the fix. Now, I'm not the only one that says some of what I've said here. I hear a lot about it, because I'm not afraid to get up here and speak to you. There's several people in board, or in the gallery tonight, that are on the board, and if you have questions about their feelings, have at it, they're here. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. Next, Mr. David Bruss.
Madam Mayor, councilmen and councilwomen, I've got three minutes, I don't know how I can possibly do this, but I'll try to do it in three minutes here. I, by the way, I live at 12405 Pampas Place in Rain Tree, right down the street from ex-city manager Kim Longbaugh, so. My purpose here is, actually, I'm looking for a little bit of guidance. I'd like to propose a service program for the, for the city, specifically with regard to types of investments, managing debt, managing investments. I'm not a financial planner, by the way. By the way, I believe the best person to manage your money is you, and not somebody else. I was kind of caught up in a retirement quandary about 15 years ago, that's when I was, I turned 50, and I decided I should look into retirement about now. And when I did, I figured that was like 30 years too late, almost. So the problem with a lot of people is they just don't know what they don't know about what types of investments are out there, what can they do, what is out of reach for them, that sort of thing. So my idea is, we should have a program or a forum in the city that can bring different options to light, and people can discuss them, and at least hear about them, and then if there's further interest, they can be pointed in the direction of further expertise or further education, something like that. But I spent the last 15 minutes dealing with my own retirement, and I picked up a lot in that time, so I'm now retired, I got retired a couple of years early, and I'm willing to share my time and effort. I participated in the past on some of the city planning circles, so I kind of have a warm feeling for the city, and I think we should do more for a lot of our citizens who just don't know what they don't know now. And so, I don't know where to take this from here, but I don't know, there's a, a policy or a process or a procedure to follow, but I'm out here listening, give me some guidance, and I'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Bruss, and I know we have an appointment set up for later this week, and prior to that, I'll have some direction for you, thank you. Is there one, anyone else wishing to speak on items not on the agenda? If you, if you'll come forward? But you're speaking on an item on the agenda?
No.
Okay.
I don't think so. Annette Rennie, 9512 Woodlinderidge Drive, Temple Terrace. I'm here tonight to talk about code board and our city attorney, Ms. Shoshon. I mean no disrespect, however, the code board, as well as the citizens, have been disrespected by you. Code board is a voluntary board that represents we, the citizens. It is unfortunate that Ms. Shoshon felt she had the right to go around code board and settle a case on Jennifer Drive, then to make it worse, insist on a reduction on Mission Hills to $5,000. We, as citizens, have put up with this since 2015. It is unfortunate that Ms. Shoshon said it was none of the neighbors' business or concern, but it is, we pay taxes. And it affects our values, as it should be noted, that both venues, both council and board, have the right for citizens to come forward and speak. Also, code board should have their own consulting attorney, and not one that is a city attorney, a city attorney selected. The last case that was settled fairly was Rolling Ridge. Since then, it's been downhill. Speaking down to our code board is not impressive and very wrong. You are saying to them you have no value to say nothing of the code officers who are out on the street daily, working and bringing back things, and you just disrespect them and ignore them. Then Ms. Shoshon stands up for the offender and not for the people of the city who pay taxes. I ask that city council call a workshop and investigate these matters. It is very important to all of us, thank you, to those in the code board who defend the citizens, who have had to live with this, and let us not forget the River Hills disaster that went on and on and on. Having said this, I still do believe in an in-house attorney, but some control is needed and some investigation of these matters is needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rennie. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on items not on the agenda?
Richard Schmidt, 5211 127th Avenue East, also chairman of the Code Enforcement Board, Code Board. What I just want to bring some information to the other side of the discussion here tonight, and in support of some of what they said, but when, when Councilman Ross was elected to the council in November of last, what is, '16, that, that, at that time, there was a whole lot of changes that came before the city and the Code Enforcement Board, with Joe Gross leaving and, and a little bit of other turmoil along the way, so we, and, So, we, and we got a new director, which is doing a fine job, but in between, we've all been, and we've got mostly a new board, which is, and we got some new policies that came down, and it's made it cumbersome. I'm sorry that probably as the chairman, I haven't done the right amount of homework, but I, rather than be the, to be defensive or to be attacking anyone, prior to, I've been on there for a while, and prior to that time, we had an attorney that was only paid when he came to a meeting, if he came to a meeting. And we didn't have to have him there every meeting. I think I met him twice in the time that I'd been on. And it's helpful, because we, as board members, can ask that person questions and get support from that person. I don't think it's fair for Ms. Shishon to be put in this position of being the city's representative and trying to be our representative, which doesn't work. It's kind of a conflict, I believe. You know, that's not the way the code board was set up and run in the past. So, if I'm wrong, I'll accept that, but I just wanted to bring that to light, that it isn't as dramatic as it seems. There are issues that we need to take care of, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move forward to MCEB lien reduction for 104 Mission Hills Avenue. Code compliance director Tom Barone will present.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members. Tom Barone, code compliance. The municipal code enforcement board lien reduction petition in case number 16-0241, 16-2041, and 17-2008, City versus Yusuf Ad Jabari, who is the current owner of the property located at 104 Mission Hills Avenue, with a lien amount of $71,400. When I presented this lien reduction to council back on April 3rd, council's decision that evening was based on the new evidence made by city staff, was to resend the lien petition back to the code board. On May 9, 2018, at the municipal code enforcement board hearing, city staff presented two recommendations, which was $9,097, and the other was using the matrix formula, using the land value, which would reduce the lien to $5,719. Based on the testimony from the city staff and the petitioner's representative, Ahmad Qusam, the code board recommendation to city council at the five-to-two vote is to reduce the lien from $71,400 to $5,000. Contingent upon the fine being paid within thirty days of council's decision, we revert back to the original amount of $71,400. If city council has any questions for city staff or the chairman of the code enforcement board, Richard Schmidt, we'd be happy to answer them.
I would ask if the property owner's representative, Ahmad Qusam, would like to speak on this item?
Ahmad Qusam, 100 Whisper Circle, Somerset, Kentucky. I think you heard about this property so many times so far, and I understand the frustration has been happened. But if you look at that, two things, you can see how's the owner, how he lost so many time about this particular, you know, property. He ended up with $40,000. All I can say, thank you for your effort, and thank everything, you know, you've done. I seen, you know, I was living in a small town called Somerset, Kentucky, and I've been, you know, in the board before, but I seen unique, you know, from the board and the city council and every one of you. Really, I seen the difference. I see complete democracy. And I just want to admire you, and you're doing a great job, you know, what you've been doing, you know, to this city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Qusam. Are there members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Counsel, is there a motion with regards to case numbers 16-0241, 16-2041, and 17-2008, the city versus Yusuf Ad Jabari, for the property located at 104 Mission Hills Avenue?
I make a motion that the council accept the recommendation of the code board to reduce the liens in the aforementioned cases to $5,000.
I'll second that. There is a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll call for the vote. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, the second public hearing and second reading to adopt ordinance 1453, providing the voluntary annexation of 7308 East Fowler Avenue. The public hearing is now opened, and planner Marion Abrahamson will give a brief review.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. I'm here to present the second public hearing and reading of voluntary annexation number 1802 for 7308 East Fowler Avenue. The owner is First United Church of Tampa. Advocate is North Point Development, and the applicant's agent is Kim Lee Horn. The request is to annex one parcel from the county to the city approximately 4.25 acres. There's an existing church on the property. Right now, it is zoned. County zoning, CN, commercial neighborhood, and residential six, RCS6, in the county. The proposed zoning is PD, planned development in the city. City staff has estimated the tax benefit to the city after this annexation, approximately $50,000 is what we have determined. Again, that is an estimate. Currently, again, there's a church, so there's no tax revenue. Once it comes into the city, there's going to be development. So, based on the construction costs and land value, you know, the city will definitely see some financial benefit. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 1453 for annexation of 7308 East Fowler Avenue.
Thank you. And we do have members of the public wishing to speak on this item. J.J. Jenkins.
Hi, I'm J.J. Jenkins, from St. Louis, Missouri. We're the applicant here. I don't have anything to add, but was just here to take questions, if you had any, and we also have our legal representation here as well.
Jason Margolin?
Yes.
Very good. Did you have anything to add, sir?
Madam Mayor and city council, I'm Jason Margolin with Aikerman Law Firm. I'm here on behalf of North Point Development. Just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today regarding ordinance number 1453 and the annexation of this property. We agree with the city staff's recommendation and respectfully request that you approve this annexation. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Counsel, questions? If the city clerk would please read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, providing for the voluntary annexation of one parcel of certain real property totaling 4.25 plus-minus acres, lying within the unincorporated area of Hillsborough County, located at the northeast corner of East Fowler Avenue and Revelles Drive, with an address of 7308 East Fowler Avenue, legally described in Exhibit A, attached here to, made a part hereof, redefining the corporate boundaries of the city to include the annexed area, providing severability and effective date, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1453?
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the nay sign? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, a second public hearing and second reading to adopt ordinance 1454, land development code text amendment regarding section 12-562 and section 12-921. The public hearing is now open. Planner Marion Abrahamson will give a brief overview.
As mentioned, this is TXT 1801, text amendment to the land development code regarding sections 12-562 and 12-921, the second reading and hearing. Section 12-562 is in reference to inspections, section correcting a Scrivener's error. Section 12-921 is in reference to off-street parking and driveway requirements, in that there's some clarification of language and text reformatting regarding driveway standards and parking criteria. Planning commission has reviewed this text amendment and finds it consistent with the comprehensive plan, and staff recommends council approve ordinance 1454 for TXT 1801.
Thank you, Ms. Abrahamson. I would ask, are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Counsel, questions? Seeing none, would ask the city clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, identified as text 18-01, providing for revisions to correct and update information by amending chapter 12, city of Temple Terrace code of ordinances, land development code, article nine, division three, flood plain management, section 12-562, titled inspections, and division thirteen, vehicular parking, section 12-921, titled Off-Street Parking and Driving Requirements, providing severability and effective date, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Would entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move to approve ordinance 1454 regarding sections 12-562 and 12-921.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Next, a first reading of ordinance 1455 to amend chapter eight, building and fire prevention code. Fire chief Ian Kemp will present.
Ian Kemp, fire chief, honorable mayor, city council, city manager. Before you, is an ordinance change of chapter eight. Approximately every three years, NFPA updates their revisions, and the last time we've updated our chapter eight has been about since 2014. So, during that time, we felt it was time to update our chapter and our fire prevention code. Some of the things that we've noticed NFPA changed that we needed to be in accordance with, and then there's some other things that we felt we needed to change that worked better for the community that we serve. So, before you, we have the proposed ordinance change.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Councilman Ross.
Chief, I read through this. A lot of it's foreign to me, not being in the fire service, but I did read it. What, if any, impact will these changes have on existing structures, businesses, and that's our, I just want to make sure that if we're passing something that's going to have the negatively impact existing people, that we know what we're talking about.
Yeah, I anticipated that question. I actually anticipated that question from you, actually.
You were too well.
But it's the question I would ask as well. Certainly, we wouldn't do anything that we felt would hinder our ability to protect life and safety here in the city of Temple Terrace. Our code, as it stands now, and as it would be if it's changed, would still be stricter than NFPA. So, we feel as though this code allows businesses, for example, right now, if a business moves a door or a wall one foot, they have to come up to the existing code. That is completely different than what the county of Tampa requires. What we found is that the good people in the community pull the permit, and then they have to spend about, you know, four to $6,000 on a fire alarm system, and those, the vast majority of people, don't pull the permit and never have to do that. So, we felt, and most of these businesses are open during the day. They're not open at night. There's nobody sleeping in them. So, we feel that a change similar to that certainly helps businesses, but also doesn't hinder our ability to do the job that we do. But by no way do I feel, as the fire chief, nor does my staff, who's worked on this certainly over the last six months, feel that there's any issue such as that.
So, the sum of these changes is a good thing for the business community, not a bad thing?
Absolutely, without a doubt. But it also does not hurt me and my ability to do our job.
Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And chief, I'd like to thank you as well for your department's work on bringing this, working on this current prevention code. Historically, Temple Terrace and our fire prevention has been more stringent than those surrounding communities, and more stringent than the National Fire Protection Association, and higher than the standard fire prevention in the U.S. These modifications that you're bringing to us will benefit the city while providing assistance to our building contractors and businesses who wish to build new structures or modify existing buildings. These changes will in no way diminish our fire department's ability to serve and protect our residents against fire injuries, so we truly appreciate the work you're doing and partnering in our economic development efforts. Thank you, chief. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? If the city clerk would read the title of ordinance 1455.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending chapter eight, article three, fire prevention code of the city of Temple Terrace, code of ordinances as follows, section eight dash five four, entitled Purpose, short title, section eight dash five five, entitled Administration, section eight dash five six, entitled Standards, section eight dash five seven, entitled Fire Safety, and section eight dash five eight, entitled Hazards Materials, providing a severability clause, effective date, authority to codify and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
If acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve ordinance 1455 on first reading. If approved, the ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on June 19, 2018.
Move to approve ordinance 1455.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Item 6A, a resolution authorizing Arcadis US Inc. to perform sanitary sewer main improvements within the West River area. Troy Tinch, Public Works Utility Director, will explain.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council. Public Works Utilities Department has determined that there needs to be sanitary sewer improvements within the West Gate River, I'm sorry, the West River area of the city. That's the area located down in the southern part of the city. It's bordered by Vanderbaker to the north and West River to the south, known as the peninsula area. So, the existing sanitary system within this area is comprised of very old vitrified clay pipe, and this pipe, as it ages, begins to crack. The seals themselves actually begin to give way, and we have leakage or infiltration or inflow into the system. It's commonly referred to in the industry as INI. And this INI is very prevalent during the rainy season, and it actually manifests itself in the form of much higher costs for the city. When we pump this water to the city of Tampa for treatment, we see an increase of about $100,000 during those months, per month, associated with this INI issue. So, to combat this, the city, together with Arcadis, has determined that they would like to line these pipes. The liner is a cured-and-place liner system. It's actually like a sock material, plastic coated with some resin inside. They place the liner inside the vitrified clay pipe. They put hot water in it. They cook it for a defined time period, and what you get is a very hard liner, very similar to like a PVC pipe, that lines the inside of the pipe, and it really stops all that INI, gives us some good structural integrity, and you get an additional forty to fifty years out of this. It is a little costly, but in these situations where you have this, the sanitary lines running through people's backyards or in the middle of the roadway, it's definitely the most cost-effective measure. So, that said, staff recommends that city council approve the resolution to authorize Arcadis to enter into sanitary line improvements within the West River area of Temple Terrace. I'll stand for questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions on this item? Councilman, down to you.
My only question is, so this sounds like it's not disruptive to the
My only question is, so this sounds like it's not disruptive to the neighbors.
That's correct. What they'll end up doing is they will go to the manholes, they will drop in a, what is called a plug, into the system, and then they will literally bypass pump the sewer system for the time period it takes to cure that section of pipe between the two manholes. Then, once it's cured in place, they will remove the bypass pump and move on down the line. So it's a pretty easy process, very commonplace within the industry.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Just a comment, really. At the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, this has been brought up a bunch because everyone is getting old and aging infrastructure, and it's been discussed about this type of lining and stuff to save money and to stop the infiltration and the extensive expenses. So I've seen a lot of presentations on this before there, because we're all getting older and we're all dealing with different things. And it could be hip replacement here, it's a little lining replacement. So everything they've seen about it has been very positive in their comments regarding this.
As Councilman Boss indicated, this project will eventually pay for itself in the reduction in INI. And again, that's water that then goes through a treatment plant, and it costs us to treat it about 50 cents per gallon. So in a very short period of time, we'll see that reduction, and this project will ultimately pay for itself, as well as future projects.
Thank you, Director Tinch. I would ask, are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing...
Madam Mayor, just to reiterate, I think what's already been said. From personal experience in a previous employment, we did a whole island using this method, and it works. It's been proven. That was years ago, and the technology has improved dramatically since then. So I have a lot of confidence that we can do this, and we can get this job done. Fixy sanitary lines have been in need of repair for years. I think it's a good move for the city to do this, so... And it will pay for itself in the future.
Thank you. If acceptable, I would entertain a motion to approve a resolution authorizing Arcadis U.S. Inc. to perform sanitary sewer main improvements within the West River area in an amount not to exceed $152,694. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on this item? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Director Tinch. Next, a resolution approving the River Hills Park Boardwalk renovation contract. Carl Langford, failed Leisure Services Director, will explain.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of City Council. Tonight, I bring before you a request for a resolution to approve a contract with JAM 520 Construction for the renovations to the River Hills Boardwalk project in the amount of $190,151. This project originally came before the board last year when we were looking to do just a portion of the project with the funds that we had available. There were some questions at the time about the materials that we were using to do the renovations with, and also looking into the future and the ability to do the entire boardwalk. We had funds appropriated through the CIT budget this year to look at doing the entire boardwalk. With the funds that we had available to do the entire boardwalk, we were also able to incorporate the recycled lumber materials to utilize the project... To complete the project with, that was bid as an alternate. The way the bids came back, we were able to do that. Research has shown that we are able to engrave that recycled material, just like we engraved the regular pressure-treated wood, in order to continue the fundraising efforts of the Women's Club through the engraving of memorial planks throughout the boardwalk. So what I'm bringing forward tonight is a request for approval of that contract in the amount of $190,151 to renovate the entire boardwalk at the River Hills Park Boardwalk utilizing the recycled material for the decking. I stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Langfeld. Are there members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Very good. I'd ask counsel, are there any questions?
I think it's exactly what we were looking for.
If acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve a resolution for a contract in the amount of $190,151 with JAM 520 Inc., Construction for Renovations to the River Hills Park Boardwalk. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the resolution as described.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item 6F, a resolution approving a construction manager contract for renovations to the Family Recreation Complex. Carl Langfeld, Leisure Services Director, will explain.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, Members of City Council. Still here, looking to go two-for-two tonight. I'm bringing before you tonight a request for approval of a construction manager contract for the renovations of the family complex facilities with Bandi's Construction in the amount of $2,608,000. Bandi's Construction was submitted a request... Responded to our request for proposals along with two other firms. The three firms went through a review process with a committee made up of the city manager, Amir Anisi, the city's building official, and myself. Project architect Henry Woodruff of Woodruff Corporation Architects sat in on the committee as an advisor. Through a scoring process, Bandi's Construction came out as the winning firm for the project and was selected by the committee to undertake the project. What I'm requesting for tonight is to approve that contract with Bandi's Construction for $2,608,000. I stand for question. Project architect Henry Woodruff is here, as well as representatives from Bandi's Construction. Should there be any questions for those organizations?
Counsel members, are there any questions? Are there any members of the public?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman.
Just for the edification of those that are watching, and may not have gone through all the backup that you submitted to us, tell us a little bit about their experience in buildings like ours and approaches like ours.
Bandi's Construction... Well, Bandi's Construction is extremely familiar to me in the late '90s when we did the expansion to the Family Recreation Complex. Bandi's Construction was the construction firm that completed that project, and they did an outstanding job with that project. So having them come on board to do the renovations the second time around, to me, makes a lot of sense because that building is known to them intimately as they were fully involved in the construction of it the first time around. Bandi's Construction also has extensive experience in other recreation and municipal facilities throughout the area. They had an extensive resume, which is one of the areas that they scored highest on through the selection process.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Councilman Ross.
Carl, is there any way... I assume this project is going closely along with the renderings that we saw sometime back from the architect, right? This is what we're doing.
Yes, sir.
So is it... Excuse me. Is there a way we can maybe put this out to the public a little bit, if this project is approved, to put the renderings that we had in here and put it on the city's website and maybe put it on ESOS in the lobbies of this building and the library, so everybody knows what... Because this is a pretty exciting project.
Absolutely. I'll be certainly be working with the city's public information officer to get as much information about this project out to the public. This is exciting.
Yes.
For us, for all the members at the Family Recreation Complex, and for this community as a whole. Everybody's been looking forward to this.
This is the biggest project we have going on right now, so...
We will certainly be pushing this out to the public through every avenue that we can.
Thank you, Counsel. Are there any other questions?
Madam Mayor, if I could just kind of make sure that something hits the record here. This project, we had budgeted in last year's CIT, we actually split this funds with the anticipation of doing first phase starting in June. That is going to happen, although we've only got 1.4 budgeted this year. The next year's budget will have to have and hold the balance of the 1.3, which I've thoroughly anticipated to do, but I just wanted to make sure that the record understood that it's a $2.7 million project, although there's only 1.4 budgeted in this budget year, but we will address the balance next coming year, 2018, 19.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, if acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve a resolution to award a contract in the amount of $2,608,000 to Bandi's Construction for renovation to the Family Recreation Complex. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Langfeld.
Thank you very much.
Next, a resolution approving the third amendment to an agreement between the City of Temple Terrace and Hillsborough County for multiple projects originally dated April 15, 2009. Police Chief Ken Albano will explain. Chief.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Members of City Council. Ken Albano, your police chief. Before you tonight is actually three, the next three items for your review and consideration, all dealing with our efforts with the Boys and Girls Club and the Temple Park Recreation Center. The city has been looking to identify potential funds that we could utilize toward the renovations and upgrades necessary at Temple Park in order to provide a facility that would be able to support the operations of a Boys and Girls Club. To that end, as I reported to counsel previously, approximately $260,847 was identified in county funds that had went unexpended through two previous amendments to this particular agreement. The approval of the agreement tonight would allow for those funds to be... The amendment tonight would allow for those funds to be earmarked for the renovations necessary at the Boys and Girls Club, proposed location at Temple Park. So any questions with respect to that?
Counsel, are there any questions with regards to this item? Councilman Boss.
When... I just have two quick questions, just so everyone knows. And when you look at the different items that have been deleted, one is the construction of 10-vehicle parking lot fencing and riverfront preserve, which we've already done, if I recall correctly, through a different funding source. And the other one, I'm not sure if we're funding that through a different source, but that's the Riverside Handicap Accessible Trail Upland Restoration and Canoe Launch was the other one that's being deleted from this funding source. I assume we're going to do something with that later on, because I'm going to guess to make it handicap accessible is a lot more work that has to go into that than to spend the money right now to create that project, because I would guess that's going to take a long time of planning to see you get everything right.
Yeah, we'll address that at a later date. The... I'm sorry, the Scout Park Parking Lot's already been done. So we think that re-appropriating these funds would be the best thing to do.
Are there members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, if acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve a resolution for the third amendment to the interlocal agreement between Hillsborough County and the City of Temple Terrace, providing the city with the authority to utilize $260,847.19 of county funds toward necessary design and construction of renovation to the county's Temple Park Recreation Center. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, as read.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Ross.
I'd just like to make a brief comment, Chief, and this is really to the people out there and the people that are watching. I read through the details of all these agreements, the interlocals, and I just want to thank and commend our counterparts at Hillsborough County. I read through these agreements, and I thought that the terms of it were very beneficial to the city, very generous on the county's part in terms of what they are going to do for us through the term of this. I think it was very generous on their part. I also want to thank the Sheriff's Office. I know that they play a role in this, and they've had a very instrumental part in making this happen.
Absolutely.
So in addition to yourself and all the fundraisers and the people who have donated, the county's been very benevolent, the Sheriff's Office has been very benevolent, and I just want to acknowledge that because all of our efforts, all of your efforts, none of this would have happened without the generosity of Hillsborough County.
Yes, sir.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, 6H, a resolution approving an interlocal agreement between Hillsborough County and the City of Temple Terrace for the management and operation of the Temple Park Recreation Center. Chief Albano.
Madam Mayor, Members of City Council, in cooperation with the Boys and Girls Club of Tampa Bay, the city has proposed establishing an after-school and summer youth development program at the Temple Park Recreation Center. Upon final approval of the proposed interlocal agreement and the completion of several significant facility modifications, the primary focus of the programs offered by the Boys and Girls Club of Tampa Bay at the Temple Park Recreation Center will be centered upon safety, health programs, athletic activities, and additional lifestyle enhancement programs. Approval of the interlocal agreement is the first with the county is the first step in the process of transforming the abandoned Temple Park Recreation Center into the Temple Terrace Boys and Girls Club. It is recommended that City Council approve the attached interlocal agreement between Hillsborough County and the City of Temple Terrace, thereby subject to the approval of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners, providing the city with the authority for the management and operations of the Temple Park Recreation Center. And I meant to acknowledge the fact that we have with us tonight in the audience Chris Lesos, the president of the Tampa Bay Area Boys and Girls Club, and Valerie Kendall, the chief financial and administrative officer of the Boys and Girls Club. So if there's any questions that you would have of them specific to this agreement or our agreement with them, they could certainly respond to that, because as Councilmember Ross pointed out, these are very, very good agreements. I believe they are the spine of these agreements are historically and have been historically utilized in the county by the Sheriff's Office, so they are well-thought-out, and they do provide us with a lot of generosity from the county.
Thank you. Chief, I would ask, Counsel, are there any questions?
I just have a comment. The progression in looking from the first resolution to then the next one that we'll consider next, you're exactly right. It was amazing to see how every item was first agreed upon and then transferred, so that there's a clear understanding that this will not fall solely on our budget, but that this is a true partnership with the county who gives it to us, and then we basically give it to the Boys and Girls Club. And I don't mean that that's in a very modest way, but looking at the progression, it was well-done, well-executed, and whoever was involved, to all parties involved, it was really... It took a lot of reading, but it was definitely... It was definitely worth reading it and to see how it progressed along and along. So I feel very confident, because I was concerned about what we were going to be taking on. As much as I loved the project, I was worried about, you know, our Parks and Recs budget and other things, but very well-executed, beautifully done, and I'm very happy to be a part of this.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, if acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve a resolution for the interlocal agreement between Hillsborough County and the City of Temple Terrace, providing the city with the authority for the management and operations of the Temple Park Recreation Center. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the resolution as described.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Motion carries. Next, a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Temple Terrace and the Boys and Girls Club of Tampa for the management and day-to-day operation of the Temple Park Recreation Center's facilities and grounds. Chief Albano will explain.
Madam Mayor, Members of City Council, before you now would be the agreement between the City of Temple Terrace and the Boys and Girls Club. As you just passed the agreement between the City and Hillsborough County, that will now move forward to the B.O.C.C. for their final review and approval. And I can tell you, a lot of their department directors have been involved in this, and it's not going to be something foreign to them. They've approved several of these for the Sheriff, so I anticipate them approving it at their next... It's a meeting in June. So this is coming before you tonight, even though technically they have yet to approve that agreement, so that you can consider and review this and authorize our mayor to sign that agreement, and everything be contingent, obviously, upon them authorizing us through their approval to have the authority to enter into this agreement with the Boys and Girls Club, so that we won't have any additional unnecessary delays. Because I know Chris has got people ready and lined up and is anxious to move forward so we can get things accomplished before that January opening day in January sometime. So...
Sooner.
So, December, yeah, I know.
No, I said or sooner.
Or sooner, yeah. Well, January, I'd be happy for January. It's been a long time in coming. So before you tonight, is that agreement, and subject to the contingent upon the approval of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners, recommendation would be that you approve that agreement so that we can get this along the way to project underway.
Questions from Counsel. Seeing none, are there any members of the public wishing to address the Counsel on this item? If acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve a resolution for the agreement between the City of Temple Terrace and the Boys and Girls Club of Tampa Bay, providing the Boys and Girls Club of Tampa Bay with the authority and responsibility for the day-to-day management and operation of the Temple Park Recreation Center. Is there a motion?
I joyfully move to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Chris Letso, for being here.
I just want to say one final thing before I sit. I got to tell you, certainly the county and the things that Councilmember Ross said certainly apply. Untold hours of anxiety and effort have been spent by this man in support of our community, and I can never say thank you enough to him for that. And I got to tell you, one of the things that's going to make this club unique and more special than I believe any other club, certainly in the county, is the relationship that we have fostered and continue to foster with our Parks and Rec Department. So, I got to, I got to thank, I got to thank you, Carl, and your staff. We have, we just today started our third summer camp. It was the best opening day we've ever had. I certainly invite all of Counsel to come by Tuesdays and Thursdays, two to four, at Greco, is where we're at, for this year, anyway. Next year, we'll be in our new home. Thank you very much for your support. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Letso, and thank you, Mr. Langfeld, for all of your work on this project, and thank you, Chief. Seeing no carryover Counsel business, we will move to new business. First up is ABM's presentation of the energy audit and the energy savings status update. Dan Klein and Rob Duncan of ABM, Inc. will provide an update concerning the status of public building improvements and energy savings.
I'll be happy to wait until after the presentation.
Was there carryover business that we're unaware of?
No, it was new business.
Okay, well, we'll do this new business that's on the agenda first, and then we'll move on. Thank you.
This is new, good business.
Madam Mayor and City Council Members, it is a privilege to be standing before you again. Thank you. We have a short presentation on the status of all the upgrades that we did, as well as the performance. So far, the program we entered into was a measuring, ongoing measurement performance, and we intend to and will always be accountable to you as the Board of Temple Terrace for our performance, and that's why I'm here. What we, where we want to start is just a really quick look down memory lane. We've been coming to Council meetings for quite a while, and in 2015, there were some significant challenges that the city was facing. The financial challenges didn't just hit Temple Terrace, it hit all cities, and I do visit cities all throughout Florida, and there are recurring challenges that people had financially. So, as we look at these, I hope not to single you out, but there were some real challenges that the city was facing, and it started with a lot of the infrastructure, the humidity challenges that were impacting the Recreation Center and the library were significant. They were having impact to services, and there were operational and safety kind of concerns in those buildings. Some of the pictures, you can see as the equipment got older, there were some significant issues in those mechanical systems. And then there was other issues that were just related to as buildings get older, we need to start investing in those buildings to keep them maintained. So, a lot of the equipment was beyond its useful life, and this program was helping to address not just the facility challenges, but now the financial challenges of the city, because where was this money going to actually come from? So, one, so a few of the challenges that were going on and the problems that we solved were beyond just the financial facility challenges, but also the operational efficiency of staff. At the time, the Leisure Services Director was spending time going from facility to facility to facility to deal with the challenges, and because of some procurement guidelines at the time, and needing three quotes for everything over $300, he was spending a lot of his time just trying to track down and keep buildings open. So, this wasn't just a big infrastructure project. It was a way to make the city a little more streamlined, a little more efficient in the process. The financial aspect was the real driving force behind this. There's a savings guarantee, and we're going to show you the performance to that guarantee today, but what this program did was it drove a lot of savings out of the current budget, and it was energy savings as well as operational savings in nature. The ongoing services was probably the biggest driving force that Temple Terrace had in need, and other cities were dealing with. Through the tough times, there's a lot of turnover, as things like salary freezes maintained in place year after year after year. I think it was, you know, quite a few years here in Temple Terrace, there was attrition and maintenance staff was lost, and there was no way to backfill those positions. So, we partnered with Temple Terrace on a long-term agreement to actually backfill those positions and to maintain the equipment and provide that 24/7 guarantee on the equipment services. In March of 2016 is when City Council authorized the program to address the deferred maintenance needs in city buildings. The program is a combination of energy savings upgrades, operational cost savings initiatives. It included things like LED lighting, the city hall windows, and all the air conditioning equipment that was beyond its useful life. There were 240 tons of equipment that was beyond the useful life. That's a significant amount of equipment in eight city buildings that needed to be replaced, just to get the buildings back to operation, operating normally. The real big part of that was, even though 240 tons was replaced, there was significant other equipment that was here that needed to be maintained. So, including in city hall where all the equipment, only, the only piece of equipment in city hall was replaced was an outside air conditioner, the outside air unit. But there's 12 other units in here, and we guaranteed those units for performance. They were seven-to-10-year-old units, so instead of ripping them out and replacing them, we said, "We will take the accountability, we'll take the responsibility, and we'll maintain them for the city going forward," and that's what we've done since we implemented this program. The installation of all the upgrades were completed in December of 2016, and the energy savings guarantee began in January of 2017. So, for the calendar year of 2017, we're guaranteeing energy savings, and according to contract, we had a number to meet, and that was $97,899 a year in energy savings. While we were doing the project, we did notice a few other needs, and a couple of things came up that were really important and need to be taken care of, and part of our partnership was we committed to a no-change-order process. So, things that were items that we deemed should have been included in the program, we included at no additional cost to the city. One of the things that's probably fairly visible is the light poles in the front of the family recreation center. We included those because there wasn't enough light coming out of the new pole lights that were going up the walkway. So, we really wanted to make an environment where it was safe for everyone to just come, any kid to be dropped off when it's dark outside, to be walking to and from the rec center, to get from the lighted parking lot up to the front of the recreation center. So, that was included at no additional cost to the city, as well as some other items that you can see were there. I believe the compressor for this, for this room went down within the first few weeks or months of the contract, and we went out and we replaced that at no additional cost to the city as well. We did, at our last presentation, present the TECO rebate. That wasn't part of the contract, but it was something we knew was there, so we went out and made sure that the city was able to get a check for some TECO rebates. Now, here's the real good news. I told you, $97,899 is what the savings guarantee was, and upon audit, we were able to exceed that by over $14,000. So, this is just the amount the city paid out in utility bills, was less by a significant amount than we even guaranteed it would be. So, that, that's kind of, that's what we're trying to get to, and it's actually exciting. There could even be a potential for extension beyond this. This looks like a little bit of an eye chart, and I apologize for the numbers at the bottom being a little hard to read, but that is, that's the calculation on month-by-month to get to the $112,000 in savings. But when we were here last time, one of the things that we talked about was, in the summer of last year, we noticed that we weren't, we didn't like the trends. We felt like we should have been a little bit further on the energy savings. So, we came in and did some fine-tuning on both the library and the recreation center on the way the controls were handling, and we did see a pretty significant jump up in energy savings in July, August, and September. So, on the air conditioning systems, there was even a further improvement. Now, once we get into the winter months, now heating comes on, and those savings aren't quite the same, but we are excited that this year we'll be able to continue to report this type of performance and above what we had guaranteed. Now, one of the things I think is really important is, as things got stable, some of the problems went away, but other people did notice. So, Temple Terrace has kind of been a leader in the area in this regard, and other cities have started saying, "Hey, what did you guys do over in Temple Terrace?" And, you know, I kind of feel a little, a little pleased to report, and I was just with City Manager Stevenson at the FCCMA Conference last year, last week, where we were able to talk to another city manager that just piggybacked the deal that Temple Terrace had. So, Towne de Bel Air did piggyback the contract that City of Temple Terrace executed with ABM, and in March, we executed a deal with them, and they're right now in the middle of a project taking care of a lot of their upgrades. So, they definitely appreciated that avenue for a simplified procurement to be able to implement those upgrades. The Counsel that Mr. Boss serves on, the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, was also notified of the program, and a nomination was submitted for the regional, what's it called, this... Am I drawing a blank on the name? The Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council has... Yeah, thank you, Dan. Hold that for a second. Yeah, cue card. No, they have an award for Regional Excellence. So, the Regional Planning Council is six counties, is that right?
Yes.
And, and what they do is they acknowledge all the significant projects that happened over a period of time, and they did recognize City of Temple Terrace with a certificate of Regional Excellence, and Mr. Klein is here to present that to the city, and if you would like to come down and receive the award, we'd certainly like to hand it to you.
Councilman Boss, will you join me?
You don't need to move the podium for this. You don't need to move the podium for this.
I would like to say yes, but I don't want to say yes. I don't want to say we need to talk to these attorneys, and we are so down. I don't know what he's doing.
My name is Dan Klein, and I'm the general manager at ABM here in Tampa, and probably also known as Rob's assistant. And I just want to say, I took a very personal, a professional interest in this project and appreciated working with all of you, but I didn't realize I'd get so personally attached. You probably know this better than I do, but being on the outside a little bit, unfortunately, I'm up in New Tampa, although I did marry a Temple Terrace young lady last October. However, your people have just been incredible. They are so united to the right things and the right cause, not only saving the money, but providing a safe environment. In addition to that, there's a lot of events, and I won't go through them, but there's, that our own employees have participated here in Temple Terrace, because it's fun. And so, I just want to personally and professionally thank you for your support, and we're here to help no matter what. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'd ask, Mr. Stevenson, do you have anything to add? Very good. I saw Councilman Ross, and then we'll go to Councilman Pagorlik.
Mr. Duncan, I just want to say, to tell these other cities that are trying to emulate us, if they think they want to follow us now, tell them to watch the next couple of years and stand by.
Councilman Pagorlik.
Thank you. You guys may remember that I was a bit of a cynic when you guys first came here. I just thought what you were presenting might be a little bit too good to be true. But, beyond the numbers, which are fantastic, the, both of you, your candor, giving us the good, the bad, and the ugly, and never really holding back from us and just telling it the way it is, and going out of your way to make this really work, I just want to thank you. We're seeing the, we're seeing the progress in the numbers, and I don't think we would have seen all that if you guys hadn't done everything that you've done, even though some of it wasn't in strict accordance with the contract requirements, and I commend you for that. Thank you.
Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo that. These two gentlemen have been great to work with. They're very responsive when we have a problem that wasn't addressed originally, and they have fixed a lot of things in this, in these six, seven buildings. They were not anticipated, but they've stepped up for the cause, and they've donated a lot of money in order to fix this. I will put on the record, our windows don't leak anymore, which is wonderful. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Thank you for the presentation. Additional new business, Council members. Councilman Donahue.
Yes, I just want to, to say, you know, occasionally, people will say things like, you know, "Who cares how many Facebook likes you get," or whatever, but let me tell you, the partnership that the Rotary Craft Brew Fest had with the city's marketing team led us to bring people to the City of Temple Terrace from 79 different ZIP codes. Now, that is a, that's quite a reach, and that's way beyond what you could do, you asked all your friends to buy 10 tickets, you know, it just wouldn't work. So, it was a pleasure to partner with Lori Hayes and Greg Polly, and of course, the Parks and Rec Center to host this event, and it's just amazing how many, when you have that many people coming to your city, you start thinking about, wow, what else can we show them, you know? So, we're not having two of those beer fests, so don't everybody get excited. But I will tell you that we sold 1,500 tickets, and even though it was raining, starting about three o'clock, and the event didn't start until four, 1,300 of them showed up to stand under the canopy of Woodmont Park. So, they were determined to come here, and I think we showed them that we were happy to have them here. So, I just want to thank you, both of you. Thank you very much for spreading the word, and social media, it works. So, let's keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Ross.
I just want to update my Madam Mayor and my colleagues on the Council on some of the code enforcement issues that have been unfortunately raised at this meeting. Perhaps premature to give you, provide you with this information, but I feel like it'd be a disservice to you to let this fester with this information that's been put out there. In years past, the Code Board did have an attorney by the name of Mitchell, who was on retainer to advise the Code Board as needed. We didn't pay him unless we used him, and which was very seldom, once or twice a year, maybe an email exchange. One of the services that he provided was to provide an orientation for new members. It has been stated correctly that the city attorney cannot represent both the city and the Code Board. That's, that's the conflict of interest. Well, Mr. Mitchell retired a few years ago, sent us a letter, said he was retiring from practice. The city did not get a replacement attorney on retainer since he retired. It's been a gap. There are numerous new members on the Code Board who have, as a result, never received this orientation that normally would have been provided. As a result of that, several things have happened. One is they've not had an attorney that they could readily turn to if they had a question like concerning a lien reduction, particularly a thorny one. They also begin to stray a bit at times outside of the rules of what they can ask and what the rules of evidence are, and ask questions that they perhaps shouldn't be asking, because it's nothing to do with the allegation. Sometimes they've ordered things that are really a little outside of the limits of what they should have ordered. Most of the struggles, as you know, because we've struggled too, have concerned lien reduction petitions. The new cases that come before them, in my opinion, are handled very well. I think they're doing a better job than perhaps even when I was on the board, as far as the consistency of the fines and those types of things. But the issue of lien reductions continues to cause some confusion, and it does with us, too. So, it's no different when it gets to us. So, the city manager, the city attorney, the code enforcement director, and I, as the liaison to the Code Board from the Council, have been working to address this issue of providing them with legal services on an ongoing basis. There are efforts underway to establish an interlocal agreement with the City of Tampa, under which we could conceivably loan our attorney to provide assistance to their Code Board, which she used to do when she worked at St. Petersburg, and they would then loan an assistant city attorney from Tampa to provide assistance on a regular basis to the Code Board. This arrangement, in my opinion, would be even better than what we've had in the past, because this attorney would be present every month, and would be there on the spot. So, it would be far better than what we used to have, which was, you know, we'll send him an email tomorrow and, you know, discuss it with him. Also, this attorney is a very good attorney. I don't know him personally, but I do know him professionally, and this is what he does all the time, is code issues. As I stated, we had, Ms. Sehun had this arrangement when she worked at St. Petersburg. They had an interlocal agreement, and Tampa and St. Pete had this. There's no exchange of any money, it's just an exchange of service. There's no exchange of any money, it's just an exchange of services. So, this is underway. It's taking a little longer than we had hoped, mostly because of what we heard of earlier. The school board security issue has occupied a tremendous amount of time on both their side and our side. So, there's been some delays in getting this in place, but that's what's underway with that. The other thing that was stated here tonight, unfortunately stated here tonight because it's just not true, and that is that there's an ongoing investigation and consideration of replacing the Code Board with a magistrate. That is not true. It's just simply not true. And it's unfortunate that it was stated here tonight because I don't want somebody to have watched the beginning of the meeting and not watched the end, and then now they don't, they don't know that it's not true. But there is no discussion, Mr. Schmidt. So, you can put that to rest at your next Code Board meeting, that that is not an issue that you guys need to be concerned about. I did go to the Code Board at their last meeting and tell them with less detail about the efforts to secure them an attorney. I really did not want to go into this level of detail, not because I don't want you to know, because I want to make sure the city of Tampa's people all have a chance to know before they hear about it from Temple Terrace. So, that's why I didn't rush right into telling everybody in great detail what we were doing, but in light of what was said here, I felt compelled to tell you. So, that is the status of it. I don't share the opinion that the Code Board is dysfunctional. I don't think that at all. They've had some rough meetings occasionally. We have too. So, I guess some could say the same thing about us. But I don't feel the Code Board is lacking. I don't feel like our citizen volunteers are not performing well. I think they're doing a tremendous job. I sit in the gallery and watch their meetings, and they do the same thing we do. They debate, and they argue sometimes, and they question each other, and that's exactly what a board is supposed to do, in my opinion. And I think they do it very well. So, we will get them an attorney, and we will get them the orientation, the ongoing training that they need. And we will get somebody that they can turn to right then and ask the questions to, and we will work through this.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I would, oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to ask the council's pleasure, and if they'd like to entertain a motion. One of the items that was brought up today, I think, lands directly with this mayor and this council. And as we have three employees, we have our city manager, our attorney, and our clerk. And when members of the public question what is happening, I think it's very important, do we have a clear position results description for each of the three employees that we oversee? Have we sat down and truly articulated expectations? Have we clearly, because if a citizen is saying, you know, we don't want you doing X, and you're doing X, and three of us might say, no, we like X, or, no, I hate X. Have we clearly shared those expectations in such a way that with all integrity, we can support our three employees? So, I would request consideration that as a body, and we know that normally going into the fall period, we do evaluations of our three employees. I feel very uncomfortable doing evaluations or preparing those evaluations to bring to council without very clear position results descriptions. I do believe we have one for Mr. Stevenson, but I don't know about our other two employees. And I think we owe them that, so that when we provide feedback, it is substantive and based on criteria that we've established ahead of sitting down an evaluation. So, that's, I don't know what the interest of the council is, or if you'd like to entertain a motion about establishing that for our employees. Didn't we do, I mean, I'm going to ask my employee, the city clerk, when was the last time you provided us with the goals? And it seems like it was this year.
At the last eval, in budget meeting, we talked about goals. And I think that was basically the first time that we had actually discussed it, but it was discussed.
And beyond goals, I'm speaking about a position results description. What are the expectations of this body for outcomes? Not tasking what I do in a given day, but a true position results description that we can say, has this been achieved, has this not been achieved? And I just think as a way of working, being very clean, and again, providing feedback and kudos and praise, but again, being very clear on our expectations, that to have those documents are really critical for us being very clean in how we lead and how we direct the three employees under our purview. Councilman Shalora.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Throughout my years of participation in public service, what I've felt has been extremely effective is that, and we used to do this, but we veered off track. We used to do an evaluation of the city clerk, city manager, and city attorney. And what I think is extremely effective is, once those evaluations are done, don't just turn them in, and then we just have a little public discussion. The person that we're doing that evaluation on should have an opportunity to have a one-on-one interview with us. And then we can have a discussion of, you want to give them a raise, or whatever you want to do, because then that's really transparency. Why don't you like, you know, what I'm doing? And you have it, and I think it's better to have that discussion one-on-one than on this whole body. And it seemed, Heartline used to do that, and that was back in the Sharon Dent days. And those meetings didn't go very well between her and I. But it was very effective where you can get to understand what each, from each other, what to expect. Like, you know, I'll give an example, and I'm going to pick on her. The city attorney's been here for seven months, and we've not had one sit-down discussion of what do we expect? And, you know, those are the kind of things that, you know, I don't call the city every day, and I don't get in the city business. To that degree, I try to, you know, they manage themselves. But if you have three employees, and the three employees work for you, then, you know, I think it's that employee's responsibility to say, okay, you know, I have six bosses, and, you know, what do you expect out of me? And I think that would be very effective to put that out. And what needs to happen is have some sort of playbook. Because from one city manager to another city manager, all this stuff gets lost and out there. You know, they did it this way. We should have some kind of, you know, book to go by, and then everybody knows what the procedures are. And we used to do this, you know, years ago, where we evaluated, you know, the city clerk, and I remember sitting down with Lisa Burns and going through, you know, what do you think about this, or do you have a concern with this? And we'd have the discussion. So, I felt that that was very effective, and throughout the years, it sort of went away. That's just one option, an evaluation, one-on-one meetings, and then we can have our discussion on how we feel fit.
And councilman, I love the concept of that playbook, and that's where that position results description comes in. So, if the expectations are clear ahead, the worst thing in the world is I'm sending you into a final exam. What's the subject? I was studying for algebra. No, it's microbiology. I'm sunk. And again, I think we've hired three competent professionals. But again, to really be able to chronicle, and if each of us, and I'll just propose, if we would just share, here's our three employees, here's my expectations. If you get those to Jeannie, I will be happy to donate the time to sculpt some position results description, get them back out to our three employees who can then modify. So, as we sit down to talk, you can say, no, I'd want this as well, or I'd have even higher expectation here. But it allows us to get very clean in how we're evaluating and doing business. And again, it sets everyone up for a win-win-win all the way around the board. Any other comments, any other business to come before this body?
I just wanted to address, I apologize, I wasn't here for the discussion earlier with the Code Board. I sat in my parking garage at my building, at the Bank of America building, for an hour and forty minutes trying to get out. But here I am. Mr. Ross is right. There is no plan to bring in a magistrate. I have been asked twice over the last almost eight years about a magistrate coming in to replace you guys. And I will tell you exactly what I've told the two people that mentioned it to me. As long as I have a vote, there will not be a magistrate. Our city is built upon citizens that volunteer. Our city has done well with citizens that volunteer. And I, for one, will not ever be in favor of bringing in a paid person to take the place of the citizens that care the most about our city.
Thank you. City Manager Stevenson, city managers report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple items here. We would like to request on six nineteen, a shade meeting with council in order to discuss some ongoing litigation that we've got on the books. If five o'clock would work for everybody, I think that would give it more than enough time to kind of go through this.
Did you already have that on the books?
We have a budget workshop that morning.
Yeah. Nineteenth?
No, the budget workshop has been moved to the twenty-sixth. That was, that was my, that was my second item here, is to request a special meeting on June twenty-sixth, six P.M., for the start of our budget discussions for eighteen, nineteen. Shade meeting on five o'clock on the nineteenth? Yes, sir. That's a regular, that's, we have a council meeting that night.
Just, is an hour enough? I ask that every time.
Yes, ma'am, I think so. I believe so.
And this is to discuss proposals?
No, this would be in order to discuss some ongoing litigation we've got concerning the Hamby case.
Okay. An hour probably will.
Do we have to make a motion for that first, before we move on to the next one? Five o'clock on the nineteenth?
I need to make the formal request as the city attorney that we have a shade meeting to discuss basically strategy and concerning settlement discussion in the estate of Sandra Hamby Prince versus Horton case.
With regards to a request for a shade meeting, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve a shade meeting at... Got to look at the date, five P.M. on the nineteenth.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. And then the special meeting, we'd like to have a special meeting on six... You want to do this? You want to do this one? I'm kidding with it. On six twenty-sixth, at six P.M., to start our budget discussions for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen. Six P.M.
Six P.M. on the twenty-sixth.
Yes, sir.
I won't be here. Frank, you said you're not going to be here?
I won't be here.
Is there another time we can do, so everybody can be here?
Twenty-seventh?
I'm out that week.
You're out that week?
I try not to advertise that on TV, but yeah.
Can we move it to the twenty-first?
We're actually, I mean, I need a couple, yeah, I need, well, I need a couple of weeks. Twenty-third is, I've got it as a Saturday anyway. You want to do it on Saturday?
The twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, twenty-second.
Yeah, I need a couple of weeks in between. We've got our director meetings coming up next week, on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I need a couple of weeks to kind of prepare some preliminary budget numbers in order to bring to council, so... Mr. Shalora, you're out that whole week?
Say it again.
I can do the week before, the week after, you just tell me.
I can't do the week after.
Week after is the...
After the Fourth of July.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. You don't think you could be ready by the twenty-second? I mean, you were going to go with the twenty-sixth.
I don't think we can be done by the twenty-second, but if that twenty-second works for everybody, I guess we will, we'll have to get it done.
I'm not sure. I'd need to move something.
Let me, let me regroup. Let me try to get with each of you here this week.
Friday the twenty-second at six, is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, well, that won't work for the mayor.
No, I just need, I'll need a day to try and move what I've got on the twenty-second.
The Fourth of July week, are you guys out, like, the fifth and sixth?
I'm...
Yep.
I'm gone the sixth. I'm here the fifth.
Because after that, the reason I say after that week, I'm out for like two weeks, so... Trying to get it in before then.
Exactly. Well, we're having a council meeting on the third.
Are we?
Yes. That's what I've been told. At four P.M., we have a...
Are you going to be at the council meeting?
Yeah. So, I'm saying, you already have an early meeting on the third.
Can we do it earlier, earlier on the third? We do have a regular meeting on the third.
Go on, move it up earlier.
Do you want to move it up early afternoon?
Noon?
Yeah.
Can we do that? I can do that?
What time on the third?
Noon on the third?
Six, I probably need at least a couple hours.
I've got a trial scheduled for the third, but I don't think it's going to happen. So, we can go ahead and schedule it.
Do you want to shoot for the third on, say, four o'clock?
Okay.
Wait, you already have a meeting scheduled for four o'clock.
Which one's that?
That's a council meeting. At six o'clock, right. But you, we already had it on the books for four o'clock. You don't, you didn't have that down?
I think that's one that was changed.
Yeah, that was changed.
Because I've got a question mark behind it, I think it was changed.
Okay, so you don't, there is no other meeting at four?
No.
On the third?
Not yet, unless we make one.
So, four o'clock on the third. Is that enough time?
I was going to say, that doesn't sound like enough time.
I'm here all day, we can start whenever you want.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock on the third?
Yeah. And then six o'clock, council.
And Mr. Stevenson, we'll turn it back to you for you to continue your report.
Okay. If the third will work, let me get with staff, let me put all this together, and then we'll shoot out of time. Three o'clock, four o'clock, somewhere in there ought to give us enough time.
Okay.
We will let everybody know.
Is there anything else, sir?
Yes, ma'am. Mary Ann, you want to come up, introduce our new planner, if you would? We've got a couple new staffers we'd like to introduce you guys to.
This is Liz, she's our new planner.
We can't hear.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. This is Liz, she started this week, she's the new planner. She comes from Safety Harbor, the last place of employment as a planner. We're very happy to have her, so thank you so much. The help will be very much appreciated. So, if you'd like, you can say a few words, introduce yourself, get comfortable up here.
Good evening. Yes, as Mary Ann said, my name's Elizabeth, but you can call me Liz. And I have a, I hold a bachelor's degree in geography and a master's degree in environmental science and policy. And my professional background is in geographical information systems, transportation planning, and community planning. And everyone I've met so far at Temple Terrace has been extremely kind, and especially Mary Ann and Amir. And I'm very humbled to serve the city of Temple Terrace, so thank you.
Welcome aboard, Liz.
Nice to have you.
Thank you.
Introduce your intern?
And I would like to introduce our new legal intern, courtesy of the Florida Bar's City-County Local Government Section, who gave us a grant so that we could hire her. And Kimberly Quintero is here from Stetson, and told me that she used to live in Temple Terrace, so I thought that was very helpful. I don't know if she'd like to say something or not.
Welcome, Kimberly.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Very good. Is there any further business to come before the council? Seeing none, meetings adjourned.